Welcome, everyone. I'm Barbara Nosworthy, Mayor, and welcome to our City Council meeting on June 7. May we have a roll call, please? Really? How's that? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. Thank you. Here.
Mayor Prostam Youssef. And Mayor Nosworthy.
Present. We have a translator.
We do, Mayor. We have Diego.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before I get started, my colleague Sam Guzman says he's waiting to get promoted into the interpreter and the panelist role. So let's start now with the introduction. Hi, everyone. I'm Diego Pons here today, later on with my colleague Sam Guzman here on behalf of the Community Language Cooperative. As always, thanks for having us at your meeting. We're going to be practicing today language justice, continue to be practicing this. So all this means is that we're here so we can help create a space where people participate and engage in the language of their heart, which is just simply the language that you feel most comfortable in. So we'll use simultaneous interpretation to help create the space here on Zoom in English and Spanish. So when I finish saying this in English, I'll repeat it in Spanish. At that moment, we'll turn on the interpretation. Once the interpretation is turned on, you'll be able to see a global icon as this interpretation there in the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen. Please like that global icon when it pops up on your computer screen and please select your preferred language. If you happen to be joining today's meeting on yourself on your tablet, however, I'll ask you to please look for the more button or the that button in order to select the preferred language that way. So if you're not fully bilingual, please select your preferred language. And if you are bilingual, then you can just feel free to listen to everyone in their original language. As always, when you select your language, you can check your original audio. So you don't have to be hearing both languages at the same time. Thank you so much. When I started, I suppose it was, you know, Mr. Yebol Pons used to take you on my colega Sam Guzman, the part of the Cooperativa Justicia Lenguaje. Como siempre, muchas gracias por invitarnos hoy a su reunión. Hoy vamos a complementarnos a continuar sirviendo la justicia al lenguaje. Lo que eso significa es que queremos crear un espacio para que todas las personas puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma de su corazón, que es simplemente el idioma que todos los personas se sientan más cómodos. Hoy vamos a continuar utilizando la interpretación simultánea para poder crear ese espacio que insume en inglés y en español. Bueno, terminé de decir esto. Vamos a activar la interpretación. Ya cuando la interpretación es activada, usted va a poder observar un icono de un globo terráqueo que dirá "Interpretación" ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla en su computadora. Por favor, selección ese icono de globo terráqueo cuando aparezca en su computadora y, por favor, selección ese idioma preferido. Si usted está haciendo ahora esta reunión en su celular o en su tableta, le voy a pedir que, por favor, busque la opción que dice "more", que quiere decir más, o el botón de tres puntos para que usted pueda seleccionar si uno ha preferido de esa manera. Y si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le voy a pedir que, por favor, selección ese idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Pero si usted sí es bilingüe, entonces, por favor, sienta se libre de escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original y jamás tienen que escuchar nosotros los otros, los interpretes a hablar. Como siempre, cuando usted selecciona su idioma, puede hacer clic en "sincronizada original" para no escuchar ambos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Sorry, Mayor, if I could interrupt really quick. If the other interpreter could raise their hand, I'll know who to promote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I will start by a reading of an Atlantic acknowledgement that is my statement. It reflects my views and not that of necessarily of all of council or of any other individual counselor, but I did want to open the meeting with this land acknowledgement. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Nuchu, Dene, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the U.S. government. And it is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this legacy. Thank you. So now we are onto identification of actual or perceived conflicts of interest. Counsel, do you have any perceived? I do. I actually do. So I wanted to acknowledge that in the consent agenda item 7.12 has to deal with property that's on the Anamos Cliffs Townhouse preliminary place. It is a call for a public hearing. It is not necessarily a vote on any decision, but I do own property there. And so I've sought the advice of the city attorney. And while I will not recuse myself from this vote, I will be recusing myself from future votes that might have to do with any passing of a plan or anything to that effect. So I wanted to acknowledge that as a potential conflict of interest. Okay. Now we will do public participation. So this section of the agenda is set aside for public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the City Council. As this is a hybrid meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be summarized in the meeting minutes. And I see we have people. Root, first person, Root, uh, Redledge.
Root.
Yes, thank you.
Root 66.
Root 66, if you'll please state if you live in the city or the county.
Thank you very much. Root, Rootledge, I live at 746 East 7th Avenue in the city here. And this is just, I'm just dropping in out of the clear blue. This is not something I've been following closely, except that I'm appalled by the harebrained decision of somebody, and I hope they hear this enough to get the insult, that wants to put the fire station up here in the, the school administration building for all the reasons that it doesn't fit there with all that traffic and noise and everything in the community, in a quiet community here. But more importantly, what they have down where they are right now. So there's now, the fire station now has in South Boto Park, a new training center there with, you know, the fire, building fire training and all of that, and all kinds of room to expand and do whatever they would like to do down where they are by the river right now. It's established. It's immediate access to a main highway. And, and it's just idiocy. I mean, I have a PhD in industrial engineering, and you don't need that to know that this is a very dumb idea. But I'll, I'll offer myself available if somebody wants to look into that and why. It makes so much more sense to leave it. And hey, if it's not enough room, then we expand it. We add facilities, we add the building, whatever's needed, but we have that whole area down there, and that's where it needs to be. I signed the petition, so at least we get a public hearing on it. But so I'm not following it directly. That's my two cents worth as a citizen. I'm just appalled by the idea of it at all. Okay?
Thank you, Root.
Yeah.
Tom, I didn't see the time, the clock show up on the screen. Are you able to start the three-minute timer?
I am. That was my mistake.
No, no worry. I just was hoping that we can have that visual for our speakers as well. And thank you for your comments. Werner, Werner Heber, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Werner Heber. I live at 131 Loxborough Street. And I hope I have the privilege to of not having a timer for myself.
It's a three minute.
Now, this one's going to be short. I want to thank Marty Poole and the staff for a great sustainability report. And this is a team effort. Sustainability is a team effort because it's an integrated process throughout the administration and the staff. And it's even more important that the staff buys into it because the staff stays behind. While all of you, more likely, are not going to be here while the staff keeps on working in this. I also like to talk about a success story. I talked to you about the 2,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide resulting from the portent cement, the manufacturing of the portent cement required for the 1.1 mile long Lightner Creek Trail that was supposed to be in concrete. Now, there's probably going to be some side walls there, retaining walls, but the majority would be the surface. So 2,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide from that trail alone. And I have been told by Kevin Hall that that is being reconsidered, and they're seriously, they're looking at other alternatives. It's most likely they will not use, I mean, they will not use concrete. They will use crusher fines. And it's, that's how affordability, sustainability, affordability, and environmental stewardship come together. Because everything fits this and fits together. That trail alone would have been $2.8 million. Hopefully, it's going to be a little bit less. But it makes, while we have incredible parks and rec facilities, keep in mind that these parks and rec facilities also make Durango more expensive as a real estate market. And so again, things work together. So keep that in mind. And I think parks and rec tax, one of these days should contribute to workforce housing. Let's not call it affordable housing, but workforce housing. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Lisa Ray. I had to pronounce your name correctly. Lisa, thank you.
Correct. My name is Lisa Ray. I live at 543 East 30th Street in Durango. And I am here because I see on the agenda that the sustainability plan is before council to be approved. In my opinion, it's a long time coming. I have, not surprisingly, gone over the plan pretty extensively. I was a commenter and gave some feedback to the plan. And I appreciate the work that Imogen and now Marty have done in order to put this plan together, revamp it, and to my, in my opinion, made it more comprehensive, more understandable, and more succinct. So I urge you to adopt this plan, but I do have some concerns. And I am under the understanding that this is a strategic plan. The tactics will be left up to the individual departments to determine as far as implementation goes. And what I'm wondering about is beyond the municipality, which this plan does address, how are those tactics going to be represented by the community as a whole? That's one of, one of my concerns. The other concern is that I don't believe any of you were here when the Sustainability Action Plan was adopted in 2015. And I doubt that you're going to be here in 2030 or 2050 when this plan is supposedly reaching its goals. So how are subsequent councils going to be able to make or take ownership of this plan? And I don't see a way that's described in the current plan as to how that is going to continue. So those are two of my concerns. I hope you will address that. But I do hope that this plan is going to be adopted. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Tom, if I may ask, can you restart the clock and just as a, if you're able to start it, the timer? Otherwise, I do check the clock in the wall here. So thank you. Gail Harris is our next speaker.
Hello, my name is Gail Harris, and I live at 2024 Glen Isle Avenue in Durango. And I want to say thank you, all of you, for what you do on City Council, and I really appreciate your responsiveness. I sent an email about the sustainability plan, and the mayor responded. Thank you. And I sent another email to everyone on City Council, and most everyone responded, including all of you three. I appreciate that. And I like what Marty Poole and Imogen Ainsley has done with the Sustainability Plan. Climate change is the biggest issue that we are facing. It makes everything worse, makes crime worse, makes immigration worse. It increases stress in the community when we see that big plume of smoke going up. And I urge you to, I'm very pleased with the Sustainability Plan, and I urge you to pass that. I think that sometimes what people forget is how much money we will be spending if we don't take action on climate. For example, I don't know what it cost for all of that planes to get on the parent's peak fire. And I get emotional because I just sat there and watched it. I was very, very grateful that all of that fire, you know, flame retardant, whatever, saved my house, saved everyone, all my neighbors' homes. And it will just cost us so much more if we don't proceed with taking good, strong action on sustainability. So thank you for the plan, and I urge you to pass it.
Thank you. Thank you, Gail. It has an initial H. Cooper. If you'll state your name and if you're a city resident or not.
Hildreth Cooper. I'm at 319 A Hellcrest Drive here in Durango. And I actually didn't realize I was signing in to speak, but I, who can miss an opportunity to especially because I want to say thank you to the Parks and Rec staff. They are all just awesome with the amazing amount of demands that are made upon them. And in particular, the city arborist, Matt Besiker, Besiker, I think is how you say his name. But I also recognize with, with this extended drought, he needs some help. He's got a lot of work. People needing trees cut down, people needing trees replanted. And I had a suggestion that, and I understand staff is looking into being able to contract out some of that tree work. But I just want to say that it's very much needed. But that's not to say that Matt is not doing a great job because he always is out there in the neighborhood, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
And the last signed up for this is Greg Hoak.
Greg Hoak, 62 Main Avenue, city resident. Good evening, council. I am here to say thank you for your approval of the Initiative Ordinance on May 29, I think it was. It was intriguing to us to have the MOU for the River City Hall DFPD investigation in executive session two days before it. And I'm actually here tonight to speak about that MOU, memorandum of understanding for people not familiar with that. I wanted to ask, I think I got an email from the city manager, Madrigal, on Tuesday night, the 24th. And he said that there would be, maybe it was a different memo, but there was to be a public process associated with the MOU. And I wanted to be speaking tonight about that public process. I'm going to presume it's going to be more than just an announcement at the beginning that we attend, and then there's no involvement for the public until the end of completion of the product. I'm hoping that there's a little bit more robust public involvement than that. Because, as you know, the public involvement for the Initiative Ordinance, well, the reason why we had the Initiative Ordinance is because there was no public process available to the citizens from September to May. And it only happened on our initiative. So I'm hoping that the public process for the MOU will be a little more robust. We'd like to know when and how the public will be involved in this. And we believe and ask that the public be involved throughout the whole MOU program. Moreover, we're interested in asking that the term of the MOU be shortened from one year to, say, six to eight months. We don't understand how it's going to take a year to determine whether the fire department or whether the fire district can acquire or lease or whatever, preferably in conjunction with the police department locating with them at River City Hall. I don't understand why that would take that long. And I'm hoping it's not anywhere associated with the timing of the council elections in April. I think that the decision on it ought to be made before the council elections.
Mr. Hoak, could your, your time is finished. Can you finish it off?
So we ask for transparency in this process, not opaqueness. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Toms, we have, we have anyone in the, on virtual who's raised their hand in hopes to speak?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. Oh, did anyone who came in late wish to speak? We will be doing the resolution, and you'll have an opportunity to speak at that. So that is a separate opportunity. Was there anyone who came after I collected the signatures who wished to make a public comment? Okay, thank you. Before we go into the proclamations, I did just want to welcome the chief, Chief Bramer here, who is act, the acting city manager at this time. And I wanted to just give a shout out to our city manager, Jose Madrigal, who is at the Government Finance Officers Association meeting. He was invited to speak on regaining trust in city government, particularly after our embezzlement case. So he is in, at, I mean, I'm not even certain where, at Texas? Austin. He's in Austin. And the chief is our acting city manager this week. So welcome. Thank you. So now we'll go to proclamations. And I have a proclamation to read it. And it's Harrison and Stephanie, will you come up? And I wanted to say I know that wearing orange, this is a celebration of this, and this is the closest I could do to orange. So I did my best. Let me read this in the Okay, so am I close enough to the mic? Good. Whereas gun violence and gun accidents touch all segments of our society, impacting people of all ages and walks of life, increasing the probability of fatalities in domestic violence or road rage incidents, raising the likelihood of fatalities in intentional and unintentional shootings and among those who attempt suicide, and placing children and young people at increased, increased risk of physical harm and death. And whereas, in honor of all those whose lives have been cut short by gun accidents or gun violence, the countless people injured by shootings every day, the families who have lost loved ones to gun violence, the survivors whose lives are forever altered, the communities and schools where mass shootings have occurred, and the community organizations that assist families impacted by gun violence. A national coalition of organizations has annually designated National Gun Violence Awareness Days, beginning on the first weekend in June, to encourage a public commitment to work together to find solutions to save lives from gun violence and to honor those individuals and communities impacted by gun violence by wearing orange, a color long associated with gun safety, symbolizing the value of human life. And whereas Durango Gun Violence Awareness Days supports continued efforts to educate the community on safe gun storage, encourages responsible gun ownership to help keep firearms out of the wrong hands and to keep our children and our community safe while respecting the rights of law-abiding, responsible gun owners. And whereas, anyone can honor this movement by pledging to wear orange during this time to help raise awareness of gun violence, to honor the lost human potential of those whose lives have been taken or forever changed, and to renew our commitment to help solve this problem. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Barbara Nosworthy, Mayor of the City of Durango, on behalf of the City Council, hereby declare June 3 to 11, 2022, to be the annual Durango Gun Violence Awareness Days, to honor and remember victims and survivors of gun violence and encourage our Durango citizens, businesses, organizations, and agencies to work collaboratively to support our local community efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of life in our community and across the nation. Harrison and Stephanie, thank you. Did you want to say a few words?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I did my best.
We want to thank Mayor Nosworthy and the City Council for proclaiming June 3 through 11, 2022, as Durango Gun Violence Awareness Days. And our thanks to the city clerk and staff for helping to make this happen. In the wake of multiple tragedies, most recently the massacre at Robb Elementary School in Texas, the fight to end gun violence has never been more urgent. During National Gun Violence Awareness Days, we will join together with other communities and groups to seek a future free from gun violence and pledge as a community to stand with our children, to protect our schools, our movie theaters, our concert venues, our churches, and all other places where people congregate. Students, families, and ordinary people are demanding that we finally do something to protect our children and our schools from gun violence. We plan to support this event with a Wear Orange March, starting at DHS on June 11, Saturday at 2:00 PM, in solidarity with this national movement and to support our local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of life in our community and across the nation. The time is always right to do the right thing. The time is now, right now. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. June 11th at 2:00 PM?
Yeah.
Clark, would you entertain a bit of a comment about gun violence?
I, you know, I think that you're welcome to submit anything, but we asked the speakers to have prepared remarks, and we're not having a forum necessarily. But thank you, Root. Thank you. Okay, now we need to go to city operational updates. Allison on the drought situation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Allison Baker, Public Works Director. So we have gotten a lot of calls over the last probably two to four weeks inquiring about what the current status is of our water situation in Durango, our conservation efforts, and the okay, what the status is of our, our drought response. So I wanted to briefly update the council and give you some, some information.
Okay, so.
Okay, so. So seeing here, the precipitation projections in Anamos, precipitation has been declining from the median range for the water year, coupled with early melting of the snowpack, a new runoff in season is anticipated. We will need significant spring slash summer monsoon activity to compensate back to median amounts for the year. The U.S. drought monitor shows Colorado, obviously, we're down here in the southwest, getting into the extreme drought area. Based on this ongoing trend, along with guidance developed in the drought master plan, the city has been operating on stage one drought response, which is regular pumping from the Anamos River, communication to reduce consumption in city operations, and outreach to our largest customers, discussing potential limitations that may or may not be implemented over time. The snowpack, water, and woodlands, just a little information from this winter, the snowpack total for 2021, 2022, winter was approximately 85% of the median amount that we normally receive. You could see our Anamos area down here in the red is southwestern Colorado. It's approximately 8% of the median snowpack is still currently available. Closer to home, the Stump Lake Basin upstream of Lemon Reservoir has 0% snowpack. It's melted approximately one month earlier than average. If you look at the black line, shows our current melting versus the gray line, which is our median. So we're about a month ahead of the normal snow melt this year. This slide shows us the Florida River flow below Lemon Reservoir. So this is before we actually pick up into our pipeline that comes to College Mesa Water Treatment Plant. If you look, the normal median is the gray-black line that extends out. This year, you can see there's been irrigation activity where there was water released from the dam, that's the stair step sections. And as we flatten out here, this would be the Florida Commission retaining water into the reservoir, anticipating perhaps a drier summer than usual. Let's see if I can move this just a little bit. Yeah.
Yeah, you can minimize it.
Thank you. So the Florida has been slightly below average for most of the water year, which began in October 1, and is currently flowing at 235 CFS today, 672022. Since mid-May of 2021, the city has maximized use of our allotment from the Florida River, supplementing with Anamos River water as needed. We're currently running one San Torito pump. It appears that the snow melt complete. I've lost my sentence here. Is the snow melt has is control, is control of the Lemon Reservoir outflow likely to increase the reservoir levels in anticipation of dry summer conditions? And finally, the Anamos River, a little bit of information, you see our median stream flow as the gray line and black going into orange is the actual for this year. We had peaked out in May and are dropping off now, likely from the the snow melt. Flow in the Anamos River has increased to approximately median levels over the last month, likely driven by significant snow melt flows in the last calendar year have been typically remained below the median. Current flow on 672022 is 182 CFM. We've initiated the performance of the San Torito Pump Station, starting pumping in early May, approximately three weeks earlier than usual, and anticipate averaging 1.5 million gallons pump per day. So that's sort of our current update. I did want to reference our municipal drought management plan that was issued in February of 2020. It is available on our website under the Public Works Division, the Water, and has tremendous references and information on our water plan related to drought activities and how we would move through different stages of different potential drought scenarios. There was a May 2021 update to this document that's also on the website, and we're anticipating by the end of June this year, we'll have an additional update. Are there any questions or additional information I can share?
I believe the governor, our governor, has expressed an interest in giving people that aren't having, aren't having a loan this year, some kind of financial incentive to not have a loan. Do you think Durango might be too affected as well?
There are some municipalities I'm aware of that are doing that. Durango is not currently in a situation that would really advantage by reducing turf grass right now. It is a possibility in the future, but it's not a current plan.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to open to council for questions.
Thank you.
I want to do a quick summary. I mean, the most, the largest action that would happen if we go into the next phase of the drought management plan is to talk to the 10 largest users. I believe it's 10.
It is, and even
That for the public and then thank you, Allison.
It is 10, and it would still be voluntary action at that point. We would be hoping to reduce water use by 10%, but there is not at that level a mandatory reduction.
And the city recognizes that it is one of those top 10 users.
Indeed.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Allison. Now, you're just stay up there, are you not? Because you're going to talk about spring cleanup.
Well, go ahead and do that. So for many years, Durango has had a spring cleanup that I think benefits the city dramatically. We get rid of a lot of less than useful materials. Did I just kill it? Or there. Okay. So wanted to acknowledge that there were also some challenges that were seen during this year. I think there were some, some areas where there were some dumping going on that we were unable to identify where it might have come from. Met with Chief Bramer and Marty Poole with Sustainability and Ben Rupp with code enforcement. And we started just talking about some ideas of, you know, what we could do going forward that would capture the benefits of the spring cleanup, which last year, we don't have the numbers yet for this year, but last year removed 4,000 tons of waste that would otherwise be in people's houses, yards, the river, other places. So we acknowledge the benefits, but seeing that there are some challenges, a few of the ideas that came up are noting the benefits, that the community members do appreciate and expect this service. It's an excellent opportunity for community-based reuse, repurposing, and recycling, especially scrap metals. Challenges are anonymous dumping in key problem areas, strain on code enforcement staff and the streets cleanup staff. Service is not available to multifamily residents. It causes confusion and possible increase in anonymous dumping with lack of access to for apartment dwellers and a different group is not our regular service. It's a strain on city staff capacity and underfunded service at current rates. I believe it's roughly $10 a year, I'm sorry, $12 a year, dollar a month, and is significant cost that it's spent over five to six weeks in cleanup with a five-man crew and a loader and trucks. So it's a significant cost that we are not currently covering with our fees. Some problem materials do show up in the gathered waste, potential need for better waste stream sorting or recyclability. The areas can have visual impacts that people find upsetting, often for several weeks. Services ingrained into our community expectations could be very hard to let go of that expectation. Discontinuing the service could result in a significant increase in illegal dumping. Potential opportunities and ideas. Improved outreach, expectations for participation, such as sorting materials, flagging certain material types for different pickups. Consideration of renting roll-off containers for historically difficult locations. That's a significant investment to rent roll-off containers, which the city does not own. So there, there might be a consideration of raising monthly billing amount if we were to go in that direction. Consider offering a week-long free-market reusable drive at the fairgrounds, just an idea. People could bring things that are reusable that they frequently put to be picked up in spring cleanup and other folks come and rescue it. So maybe doing that in a more structured manner, potentially at the fairgrounds. Align timing with household hazardous waste collection events could expand to other waste streams in the future. The potential for some, I'm sure we shouldn't say in a public forum, but dummy cameras at some locations might discourage certain people, might not. Shorten the duration of the pickup window. And we'll probably have to hire contract truckers to accomplish that. But if we were to go from five weeks to two or three weeks, it might be a little more manageable because you notice that the complaints go up sort of logarithmically during that time. They start out real slow and then as time goes on, people get really tired of it. Potentially limit the time when residents are allowed to place the refuse at the curb as opposed to the entire period. As an alternative to pickup, we could consider providing five free landfill or transfer station vouchers per account each year, perhaps offering scheduled pickups for people over a certain age or with a handicap tag to accommodate difficulty in getting materials to the dump. Evaluate potential increased service fee to better cover the true cost of the service. Research and cataloguing material types for future waste diversion based on key material streams, like yard waste, metals, appliances into different areas, which might be a great research opportunity for some Fort Lewis College interaction. So we've got a lot of things that we're kind of flying around and considering, wanted just everybody to be aware that we're not ignoring it. And we will spend some time between now and next spring cleanup, trying to define and refine where we go with this and what's helpful and what's less helpful, and that we'll continue to talk to council about it and see how to best balance the cost and benefits of that program. Thanks, Marty, for the good input here on the document. It helped a lot.
Thank you, Allison. Council, questions?
Allison, when you do this investigation, will you be here to have other communities to see what best practices are, what works for them and what doesn't work for them?
I think we can do that. I think frankly, this is a very unique service that not a lot of cities provide, but to the degree that we can, finding out, for example, that other communities are using vouchers instead of a pickup was one example of that kind of thinking that we'll pursue and see, hey, what does work for our people?
They have to look outside of Colorado. There are a lot of other states that do these types of pickups.
That's wonderful opportunity. I'll look forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you for listening to the community and trying to figure out ways to qualify. But I do agree that this is a great used service, and it probably does limit a ton of legal dumping. And I would want to see that. Used and respected by so many people, do it well and right. That makes sense?
Right.
Also, like, just finding that balance with your own.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Allison. I will say that you are right in that by the fourth and fifth week, councilor gets to get photos and hear from the community of the eyesore that it is. So something that we can find a solution to that, I think, will be appreciated very much.
We'll work toward that very
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we are at the review of the consent agenda.
We got your message, Tom. We need to push to talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council, by a single motion, to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. Ms. Hammer, can we have you read the consent agenda?
7.1 is approval of minutes of the May 17, 2022 city council study session. 7.2 is approval of minutes of the May 17, 2022 city council regular meeting. 7.3 is approval of minutes of the May 24, 2022 city council special meeting. 7.4 is approval of minutes from the May 26, 2022 city council special meeting. And 7.5 is approval of minutes of the May 31, 2022 city council special meeting. 7.6 is discussion and possible action concerning the adoption of the City of Durango Sustainability Plan. 7.7 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution to amend the 2022 budget. 7.8 is a request for a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing three ground leases with Escher Aviation Group LLC at the airport. 7.9 is a request for a public hearing regarding the River Trail Apartments preliminary plan development to be held on June 20, 2022. 7.10 is a request for a public hearing to consider enhancement for fast-track communications for the installation of an underground fiber optic line to service the Hillcrest Golf Course, also would be held on June 20, 2022. 7.11 is a request for a public hearing to consider enhancement for Charter Communications Incorporated for the installation of an underground fiber optic line to service the Asperal Apartments to be held on June 20. And 7.12 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Anamos Cliffs Town Homes preliminary plan at 1700 County Road 203. That hearing would also be on June 20, 2022.
Thank you. Council, do you have any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to remove item 7.7, discussion and possible action concerning a resolution to amend the 2022 budget.
I would like to remove 7.6, seeing that Marty Poole is here, the discussion and possible action concerning the adoption concerning the adoption of the City of Durango Sustainability Plan. And my rationale is I would like to be able to bring elevate the attention of to this than just having a vote on the consent agenda.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of items seven point six and seven point seven.
I'll second.
May we have a vote?
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Boskins? Mayor Procham Youssef? And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. So on seven point six, Marty, I was hoping you might be able to come up to the microphone as well. You've had people here tonight speaking in support of it. People have been involved in this. You've also acknowledged that you're building on the work of others, but in taking this to a new level. And I just wondered if you wanted to say anything about the plan and if counsel had anything to say as well? And if you had any thoughts to Ms. Ray's questions that she raised about holding ourselves accountable for decades?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I would just like to start off by acknowledging all the work that went into the plan. And my appreciation to live and work in a community that that is so sustainability focused. I think when we are working on these efforts, there's always more to be done. And I think our community really strives is always looking at that next thing that we can do, which I think is a great mentality to have. And at the same time, I want to acknowledge all of the work that's been done previously, not just in in planning and envisioning, but the actual on the ground work of the infrastructure that we have as community, the services that we provide as a community, the types of codes and policies we have. And then all of the efforts from community wide organizations around sustainability. I, you know, it just, it reflects a love and appreciation for our community and makes me extremely proud. And and I, I really enjoy the opportunity to to continue to serve in this capacity. To the point of how are, how is the city going to hold ourselves accountable? And how's the, you know, as a, the City of Durango municipality? And how's the community going to hold ourselves accountable to these efforts? I really think that comes back to this commitment in the plan to to have this annual reporting process and and revisit those actions, those actual on the ground things that are being done and look at the data, look at the indicators to say, is this working? And I, I think we integrate that process into the city efforts. And and we continue to share throughout the community, this is, this is what we're doing. These are the priorities around sustainability. And this is how we are building forward on that as a community as a whole. And you have, having the city be a leader. And also building off of successes, I think, at the state and national level around sustainability, which are important as well and really guide our work. The state of Colorado, there's a lot of of legislation and and action being done that benefit us as a community. So I think that's what I would say and and happy to answer questions or anything around that, but.
Other comments from counsel?
I just wanted to thank you. Got it. Okay. I just want to thank you for your hard work in like finalizing something that many staff members have put so much time and effort into. And you, it seems like you have a clear vision for actionable steps, which is great to see, especially as we move forward after adopting this, hopefully. I think for two years, it's been a focus on our strategic plan. And so it's important to note that like counsel stands behind it as well. It's a priority of ours. And I'm just excited to see its implementation over the next few years and how you kind of lead the charge. So thank you so much for your effort in this.
Yeah. And I wanted to thank the community for working with staff and staff for working with the community because it takes everybody's vision and the way we look at it to make it happen. So I just want to say this in particular is a great area for that to have happened. Thank you very much.
I also want to thank you, Marty, for your work and carrying this forward. But I'm reminded of pre COVID when this chamber was packed with people calling for a sustainable plan to really to stretch our goals and to develop the work plan around that. And I think we've made that kind of progress. So I appreciate your work. We're proud to have you on our team. And now we need to hold ourselves accountable with those regular updates and feedback back to the community. And again, to Counselor Baxter and Counselor Beal's comment, I do appreciate that. I also want to thank the community for your passion and and commitment and setting the expectations for us as elected officials. Thank you. Do we have a vote?
Well, with that, I'll make a motion to pass item seven point six, discussion and possible action concerning the adoption of the City of Durango Sustainability Plan and that we pass it.
And I'll second.
And is there any more discussion on this topic? Then may we have the vote, please?
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Boskins? Mayor Procham Youssef? And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all. Yeah.
So I pulled seven point seven discussion and possible action concerning a resolution to amend the 2022 budget because I, I wanted the community to be aware of the impact that our economy is having on the projects that we can get accomplished as a city. So this amendment to the budget has to do with the fact that original, the bids are coming in over the original budget for waterline replacement projects, Ninth Street, Main to Camino in particular. The current budget was $525,000. The additional cost that's coming in through the bids is an additional $795,000. So it's taking it to over $1.3 million. And the reason why I want to highlight this is because our current economic conditions, the cost of labor, the cost of materials, the availability of labor and materials are going to have a significant impact on how many projects the city can get done with the revenue that we take in. And I just want the community to know that it isn't because we aren't planning to do capital projects. We aren't initially voting for them. It's the, the cost of doing them is obviously skyrocketing. This is over 100% increase. So I just want us to be aware of that and not be as critical as we might be otherwise when we don't get some of the projects done that were on our CIP lists. Those are capital improvement lists. Because the staff is doing their darndest to make these things happen. And until our economy changes a little bit, it's going to be a much more challenging time. So I just wanted to make that.
I think that's a point well made. I'd like to add that it's not only the cost, it's the lack of availability of contractors of people to do. Yeah. So I want to emphasize that as well. The cost was a significant increase over anticipation and then getting people to do the work. So thank you for pointing that out to the community.
Everybody's struggling with it. It's not just the cities, but just wanted to make it obvious.
Did you have a comment about, oh?
No.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the HHS Resolution authorizing appropriations. Are you going to say resolution numbers?
It's a resolution R 2022 dash 27.
Approve resolution R dash 2022 dash 27.
I'll second.
Is there any other comments or discussion? Then let's have the vote.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Boskins? Mayor Procham Youssef? And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. Thank you. So we do not have any public hearings tonight if I'm.
We do have one.
We have a quasi judicial hearing. I'm just looking at that, right? Policy related hearings. So item 10.2, a public hearing regarding Highway Three Third Edition Durango Mesa Bonds Annexation north of 1075 Highway Three. Vicky, you'll be presenting this.
I will. Let me share my screen. Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a Highway Three Annexation. It's a third edition. And it's to annex a small lot that was recently created through an exemption plat process in the Platte County. And it's located north of 1075 Highway Three, which is bonds construction. And the initial zoning is proposed for rural agriculture. The site is this small site that you can see that was cut off from the Durango Mesa property. And the property had an encroachment from bonds for years. And the deal that was struck between Durango Mesa and Bonds was that he would receive this property in exchange for providing emergency access and utility easements. So the property itself has been used for storage of their equipment and then also access to their upper property. And that will be allowed to continue as a nonconforming use under this process. The process in exchange, the cities, the city, the county and the Mesa are all getting an emergency access easement and utility easement. And it starts at the top of the Mesa, comes down the hillside and goes through his property out to Highway Three. The proposed annexation plat is pretty straightforward. This parcel is going to be connected to the existing parcel, so it won't be a standalone parcel to the existing bonds property. The, all the state statutory requirements were met for this for annexation. So has contiguity, serviceability, access. The Planning Commission reviewed this April 25th, 2022, and the vote was 5-0 to approve the annexation and initial zoning. And we have had no public comment on this project. Their fiscal impact, really the property and the use of the property is not changing. It really doesn't impact the city fiscally. But however, the provision of the emergency access up to Durango Mesa will allow for additional development on the Mesa top. As far as applicability to strategic plan, this, this, can't talk now. Strategic plan and comprehensive plan goals, the annexation and requested zoning are in conformance with cities' plans, policies and goals. The annexation emergency access does allow for additional development on Durango Mesa and thereby addresses the following strategic plan goal, enhance livability and sense of place, enhance Durango sense of place in ways that celebrate the community's culture, character, outdoor roots, access to nature and unique amenities, and then affordability and economic opportunities, support economic vitality and advanced opportunities in ways that enhance character, community and resiliency. So there are conditions of annexation. Most of them are pretty standard annexation agreement. You need a decent plat, talks about the zoning being rural agriculture. It does say it must be consolidated with the adjoining property, the new lot, and that the existing or and or similar industrial storage of the property can remain as a nonconforming, but it can't be expanded in the future and it has to be terminated upon redevelopment of the property. So with that, it's the recommended, it is recommended of the Planning Commission that the city council by motion move to approve the Highway Three Third Edition Annexation or Initial Zoning of RA with the findings and conditions as reflected in the Planning Commission Staff Report and minutes of April 25th, 2022, and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance for first reading at the next council meeting.
Great. On that note, I will open the public hearing. Are there, is there anyone in the audience or virtual who wishes to comment on this project? Anyone raising their hands virtually?
No one virtually.
And is there anyone from the, the developer side that wishes to speak? Please come forward and state your name, please.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, I'm Danny Ellers. I'm the attorney for the Durango Mesa Park Foundation. I want to say publicly, this is what happens when you tangle with city staff, especially Vicky. Now, I, I had a fall on a trail, but no, Vicky is, she's been terrific in this and Turi Nycom has been terrific. Kevin Hall, Allison, Keith, all of the people that are working with us on the Durango Mesa Park. This is our first official step. And we're continuing to work along, working with city staff, working with county staff for something that'll be a terrific addition to the City of Durango. So we're grateful and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments?
Just glad to see the progress. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
It is good to see the progress. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Highway Third, Highway Three Third Edition Annexation and Initial Zoning of Rural Agricultural with the findings and conditions as reflected in the Planning Commission Staff Report and Minutes of April 25th, 2022, and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance for first reading at the next council meeting.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I think this is great because Durango Mesa Park, it has, we have some great things going to be happening up there. And this is one of the logistical nightmares that had to be gone through to make it even more capable of being developed in that way. So I'm very excited about it.
As well? And I want to thank you for the compliments to the staff. I, I think there's a real sense of customer service and working to get to yes and how to do that. And so I hope you got that sense, still maintaining standards, mind, mind you, but working to find solutions. So thank you for the positive feedback on our, our team. On that note, let's, you made the motion. You seconded it. Let's have the vote.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Boskins? Mayor Procham Youssef? And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. Okay, introduction of ordinances. We have an ordinance amending portions of the three and standards related to section 3.2 parking requirements and declaring an effective date. City Attorney, you'll be taking that?
Yes. Yes, Mayor. This is ordinance O 2022 dash 19. The hearing was previously conducted on this issue. The ordinance has been prepared at the direction of council. So this item is before you tonight for first reading.
Are there any questions of the city attorney? Any comments on the ordinance? Do we have a motion?
I'm only a motion to approve ordinance 2022 dash 19.
I'll second. Any discussion? Run a vote.
I'm really excited about this because it's, it's the next step in getting the La Posta area opened to development, which would be for commercial, white, industrial and residential, which we all know we need more housing. So I'm very excited about that as well as supporting the North Main Gateway Urban Renewal Area for the same purposes of expanding our housing inventory and making sure that we have workforce and middle income housing available to our community members.
Actually, that's the next ordinance.
Am I missing it?
That one's important, too.
That's weird.
That's important, too. I forget I said that.
I'll say it again later.
But not, yeah, ordinance 2022 dash 19 is the three springs codes and standards.
Okay, well, I just, my piece of paper cut it off, sorry. Oh, there it is. Sorry. My apologies.
Is supportive. Do you want to bring that one to a?
So I'm in support of this.
Let's have that vote.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Boskins? Mayor Procham Youssef? And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. Okay, now we can move to item 12.1, discussion and possible action concerning a resolution to amend the 2022 budget in order to support the development of the La Posta area and a private, our public private partnership to develop workforce housing in the North Main Gateway Urban Renewal Area. Eva, are you going to be presenting?
I was wondering why you weren't presenting previously, but I thought, oh, well, maybe Dirk took over. So what can I say?
Welcome.
Thank you. This is Eva Henson with the Housing Manager for the Housing Division, and Devin Schmidt is also on Zoom. I think I can see her there. Hi, Devin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. I apologize for not being in person. My entire family has a stomach bug, and I certainly didn't want to share that. So, I just wanted to give kind of a brief introduction while Eva pulls up her presentation, but really, the intent of this item is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution to amend the twenty twenty two budget. And this is in order to support the development of La Posta Road, utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funds and a public-private partnership to develop workforce housing in the North Main Gateway Urban Renewal Area. So, as counsel has previously discussed, there was an appetite to use the ARPA funding for La Posta Road. So, this request does include an appropriation of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in order to support that infrastructure design. In the agenda packet, you'll see that we did include the total distribution of ARPA funds that the city expects to receive, which is that four point seven million. And then counsel had requested to see what had been previously appropriated, so that was also included in the agenda packet. So, that's really the ARPA part of it and the La Posta Road development. The second part of this, and certainly equally as important, is a request for a budget appropriation from the Housing Innovation Fund of six hundred thousand dollars, requesting to be appropriated and transferred to the Durango Renewal Partnership Fund. And that's really to develop the workforce housing. So, we placed this item under the general business as really an opportunity to discuss and really kind of highlight these projects. So, that's just the, the general budget side of it. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Eva Henson to really take a deeper dive into what the projects entail.
Thank you, Devin. She covered a lot of that for me, but I'm excited to be here as well this evening. This is one of my first projects in my role and bringing to fruition deed restricted units into our community and a great need as we continue to battle and combat the housing crisis facing our community. So, on that note, the twenty twenty two proposed budget amendment. As Devin mentioned, staff has been coming to council the last couple of months on several smart and strategic growth expansion areas. In particular, this specific appropriation will be around La Posta. This currently aligns with our strategic plan for affordability, economic opportunity, financial excellence, and high performing government, enhanced livability and sense of place, to create housing to enhance multi-generational community workforce, as well as attainable and affordable housing overall, as well as assisting the Urban Renewal Authority to support and implement URA projects. As identified in the staff report, the appropriation is to support La Posta area infrastructure advancement. The breakdown for the request for the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar American Rescue Plan Act funds is a hundred and fifty thousand for design for the mainline water and sewer facilities, as well as five hundred thousand will be used for road, trail intersection designs for River Road and La Posta Road from the highway intersection to the southern end of the La Posta Road area, as well as additional traffic analysis. This is just a picture of the proposed development for the Animus Park or Animus City Park overlooked townhomes. Actually, I'll go back for just a second there. This originally with a developer could have potentially been just several single-family homes. So, I'd like to just bring that and highlight to this project that we worked within parameters of density bonus, as well as a public-private partnership opportunity here to increase the density to get twenty two townhome units, of which ten will be deed restricted. The request here for appropriation would be towards infrastructure and other development cause. Three hundred and fifty thousand will come from the Housing Innovation Fund, which will be a loan to the URA, and then additional two hundred and fifty thousand from the Housing Innovation Fund from revenues. This has already been allocated from the five hundred thousand dollars for the housing incentive program. So, the two hundred and fifty is coming already out of that five hundred thousand that's been appropriated in our budget already to secure ten long-term deed restricted units and transfer those funds into the Durango Renewal Partnership Fund for the permanent workforce housing. And this slide just highlights the return on the investment. Four of the ten units will be reduced price appreciation cap and local worker occupancy requirement. The other six units will be a local worker occupancy only. Those we often call a lighter restriction, and that would be a no price appreciation limits on the offset of those being sold. And that's really just part of the presentation to highlight this exciting opportunity on both projects.
Great. Questions from counsel?
I love to see you so excited about this. Thank you.
Eva, I have a question for you.
Sure.
If these are appropriated tonight, how much working capital will you have available for future product, projects?
Well, if we're just looking at the housing incentive program dollars, that leaves me about two hundred and fifty thousand for that project for infrastructure costs, potentially. I also need to do an ADU incentive program. That's in the works right now. We'll be coming back to counsel here soon on that, and we haven't started to touch multiplex rehabilitation at all.
So, it sounds to me like you may need to be coming back for additional fund capital.
I hope so. I'm hopeful that we'll have additional projects this year that I'll be coming forth and possibly asking for more money. Thank you.
Wonderful. Do we have a motion?
You were so excited about it.
Do it. Say it again, Counselor Baxter. Say it again.
I, so, do we have a, a resolution number?
Resolution twenty two dash twenty eight.
Oh, sorry, twenty two dash twenty eight. I can't get used to this new button.
We can hear you. That's, that's the thing, right? It's just that people at home can't hear you. So, because as you know what I said before, I support this, I would like to move that we pass Resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty eight.
I'll second. And under discussion, we just want to thank you, Eva, for your work. It's hard work. We're a welcome addition to our department and our, our city government.
The strides and like the actual steps that are being taken now are, it's so fun to watch, and it's exciting. So, thank you.
And I also want to mention that particularly with La Posta area, well, actually in the North Main Gateway Group Two, this is also public participation in, I mean, private participation in public work. So, we're doing it together, and it's that way, it turns out the way that it works for everyone. So, there's a whole group of people, including landowners and thoughtful visionary people down in La Posta, who said, yes, we want to work with the city on this. And the city's like, we can make that happen, right? And the same thing with our development group up on the Thirty Second Street area. Same thing is, yeah, you know, we could build four new homes, and then it'll sell for a million dollars plus on the river. But we're interested in our workforce. We're interested in middle-income people having housing here. So, I just want to say that I love the, the collaboration that's been going on, and I'm hearing it from the community, and I see staff doing it, and I appreciate it.
And it's truly a model for as we look forward, right? This is another strategy, another tool, another project, another partnership, but so many more on the horizon. And I spend a lot of my time front and center, talking with developers, working with staff, working with departments, and hoping that we have other projects to bring forth as well for affordable and workforce housing and attainable, right? We're covering a large spectrum for our community.
Very good. Ms. Hammer, can we have the call for the vote?
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Absolutely.
Counselor Boskins? Mayor Puchan Youssef? And Mayor Nosworth?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. What a big accomplishment. Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's putting money to work to incentivize workforce housing. We like it. Counsel reports and actions. Each counsel member is provided an opportunity to report on meetings recently attended and to discuss topics not otherwise appearing on the agenda.
Okay, I can start. I had the Durango La Plata County Airport Commission meeting on May nineteenth. We had a hundred percent schematic design presentation on the terminal expansion project that the commission approved and accepted, I guess. And so, that's great seeing the phases that it's going to go through and some timelines starting to get worked out, and so, that's super exciting. The commission was also, and we approved that in the consent, or this in the consent agenda, presented and approved the construction and lease of three non-commercial hangars located on the North General Apron. And then we discussed the twenty twenty three airport operating budget process that's going to be coming up and just kind of talk some overall budget objectives and strategy. And then some just basic reminders. Face masks are no longer required in airports nationwide. April twenty twenty two passenger traffic finished at a hundred and six percent of twenty nineteen levels. So, we're still kind of up on the uptick at DRO, which makes that expansion even more important. Trying to think what else. Runway rehabilitation project, I'm just going to say this every time because it's super important. Still, a single runway airport is going to be closed September seventh, twenty twenty two to September sixteenth, twenty twenty two. So, it'll be, cannot fly out or in of DRO during that time. And I think that that was the big overview for the airport. I also had the Creative Economy Commission meeting on May thirty first. We had a few updates on some projects, the Love Letter Murals update. I don't know if you've seen it. It's along the side of the Crossroads Building. That's going up and looks great. Of course, the developer just submitted plans for phase two of the Crossroads Building, which has, I mean, I was, worked for Oakland when we built the Crossroads Phase One, which was before, or yeah, before I had kids, so I don't even like, so like, my kid's fifteen. It's so long ago, or maybe it was like right as I was having him. And so, that just went in, so that was interesting little update, but it'll be ways out, and the, you know, the mural will be beautiful. The Common Threads update. So, still no successful bids for that June thirtieth grant deadline. We are looking at some other locations now, because now our focus is going to be to get the piece installed, because that's super important. That there, north of San Arena, there's a small hill off the highway, and they're potentially looking there. So, you still get highway visibility, but you won't have the C dot traffic impacts and requirements. And so, that's not for sure. There, we were just talking about a few, and that was one that was brought up. Lodger's tax application was launched. The Herald wrote a small piece highlighting it. We went through the review process. We're going to have two C E C members and two community members ranking the applications. We talked about some point rankings to bring up, and the C's before, that we'll go through before the C E C brings it to council for final recommendations. There was some good talk about Hawk Tank uses some for some of their evaluations of their small businesses awards and stuff. And so, we're going to work with through that. There was a South Fork character discussion for that new development out by Three Springs we just saw at the last council meeting, trying to make it more creative and community-driven. So, there's traffic circles that are going to be implemented there, and we're talking about art potentially or something going on there. We have a ton of lead time on that. It's not potentially even till twenty twenty three. So, we're talking about a process for that traffic circle art, maybe a call to action for Three Springs community input, potential biking, since it could be, will be pathway eventually to Durango Mesa Park. Some sort, you know, some sort of collaboration with that community. So, we will TBD, and we just kind of discuss that. Let's see. Okay, so we had a presentation by this program, and I didn't write their name, and I don't have it down, but they focus on health and connectivity and arts are a key to making that happen. They're going to do a three-day activation, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. They're working on dates. They're working with Fort Lewis College. It's going to be an art analysis on Thursday, food and film, featuring local filmmakers and food trucks or restaurants, a career day at the college showcasing what's possible in the arts field for careers. They'll probably be sometimes in September. It's an organization based out of Denver, and they've done it all over Colorado. They sort of like launching to make health and connectivity a part of the arts. So, that was a kind of a cool presentation. And then the powerhouse made a presentation to the C for lodger's tax funding, and so, kind of discussing that and needs that the powerhouse has. So, they have the application, and we'll be going through the same process, but we had a presentation by, by them. So, I think that is pretty much all I've done.
Great, great. Counselor Baxter?
The only meeting that I had was canceled because there wasn't enough to happen, so I don't really have anything to say.
Okay, I have just a few. I attended yesterday's Infrastructure Advisory Board meeting, and Allison and I were talking about what a really good meeting it was and the quality of the discussion. I always comment on it because it's a very thoughtful group. We went through Allison's proposed capital improvement project, plan, and schedule, and some of the estimated costs. We, and there was some suggestion of maybe you want to move some things around here, and that was very good feedback. We talked about the water rates, sewer rates, and possible, and what would be involved with a rate study. And one of our advisory board members brought a sample of a very simple, simple but effective RFP for a rate study request. And so, we'll be, council, the advisory board will be looking at that. We talked a little bit about the drought management and some of the things that I know that the advisory board will be working on so that they can bring it to council. We'll be looking at the stormwater management plan and the, the possible ways of funding that. We'll be looking at the rate study, bringing that back, but it's still council responsibility to set those large parameters. You know, what is, how much is it affordability versus, you know, securing a higher reserve fund, whatever we want to achieve with that. We'll be looking also at coming up. Those were the two big ones, was the rate study and the capital improvement project, and then debt. A recommendation of some of the projects that we might look at with, for issuing debt will be a big discussion. And we're, we're very cognizant of the fact that we need to get all of that done in a timely manner in, in concert with the budget preparation, so that it can come to us in October, and it's gone through the system. So, I think that would be, I didn't know if Allison wanted anything here, since she's the, one of the last people here, but it was a, a good discussion again, as usual. Oh, we also talked about asset management and the importance of that as well. So, those were the, the meetings. I did also want to just to the community. I know that it was mentioned that I was in quarantine with COVID, and I just wanted to thank the many people who wrote to me privately from the, people I know and don't, just wishing me a speedy recovery. So, it is so good to be home, and thank you to, to those of you who reached out. So, if there's nothing else to add, Chief, do you have anything you want us to be aware of?
I do not at all.
Very good. Then let's call this meeting to an end just before seven PM.